All right.
Okay, we're ready. Okay, good, good evening, everyone. It's time is six thirty and it's time to convene our regularly scheduled board meeting. Would everybody like to please make the appropriate move and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. If we could, we'll need to do a roll call, please. And before we do the roll call, just a reminder that all the board members, once they call your name and you respond, please indicate whether you're visit, you're attending remotely or in person. You ready, Hannah?
Yep. Andy Graham.
Present, remote.
John Brotherton.
Present, remote.
Bill Sweat.
Present and remote.
Mark Keys. Joan Fitzgerald.
Present, remote.
Joe Robinson.
Present, remote.
And Sandra Ulot.
Present, remote.
And Hannah, if we could, let the Venice reflect, I'm present for the meeting plus I am present at site plus I'm attending remote.
Got it.
Okay, there appears to be a quorum so we can legally hold our meeting. Also, like they already know that the meeting is being recorded. And a copy of this will be posted on our website for everybody to view. Also, as a reminder that since most people are attending remotely, any type of action we take of all votes must be done in a roll call vote, please. So this moves us onto item number two, which is agenda approval. So have the board members all had an opportunity to review the agenda. And if anybody has any recommendations on any changes, if not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Ulot. Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Graham, and then we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Graham.
Hi.
Ulot.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Robinson. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Hi.
Thank you. Sweat.
Hi. And it's unanimous, motion carries and the agenda is approved as presented. I don't believe we have anybody for the public comment sections. I don't receive any, I've received any emails or requests for telephone calls. Okay, so this was the item number four, consent agenda items. The items in this category will be, A, the board meeting minutes for February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, open session minutes. B, the bills and treasures report. C, there's some donations for Eastlon, Casey's Cash and Classroom Grant of twenty-five thousand dollars for books for classroom libraries, bilingual library and library over, there were over two hundred applicants and we were able to get that grant. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding consent agenda items? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda items included, to include ratification of bills prepaid by the finance manager under board policy four dash fifty.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Ulot. Anyone care to second? I'll go in a second. So seconded by Sweat. And we'll need a roll call, please.
Sorry, everybody. Ulot.
Hi.
Keys. I'm sorry. Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Graham.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Sweat.
Hi. And it's unanimous motion carries, so consent agenda items have been approved. Since we didn't remove anything from item number four, we can skip five and we're going on to item number six. It's listed as an action item and it's the Social Equity Working Group Presentation for Recommendation, Minority Teacher and Administrative Recruitment and Retention. Dr. Woods.
Great. Hi, everybody. We have another group ready to present from the Social Equity Working Group. I'm gonna do one thing that I forgot to do last month. There are three folks part of this group who are ready to present tonight and I just want them to unmute themselves and introduce themselves and what their role is in the district or as a community member or as a parent. And so Jennifer, Emily, Tracy, why don't you tell us who you are real quick?
Sure, I can go first. I'm Jennifer Free and I'm a school social worker at JW Ader.
I'm Emily McMillan. I am the special education teacher in the resource setting at Eastlon Elementary.
Tracy Williams. I am a special ed teacher at JW Ader as well as a community member and a grandparent of a student that goes to Northview.
Great. Thanks, guys. So in tonight's presentation, I did want to point out that in the documents that you have for your board packet, there is an attachment that you can access that has some supporting information, but they're gonna be presenting most of what's in that tonight. It just has a little more detail. As you know, board members, we have, we started this really at the beginning of the school year. Last month, the groups of disciplinary practices and family and community leadership presented. This month, we have staff recruitment and retention and fingers crossed, the last two groups will go in April. So I am gonna go ahead and hand this over to Tracy, Emily, and Jennifer, and you guys just need to tell me when to click ahead, okay?
I'll be starting this off. Having a teaching staff that matches your student body is very important. The children need to have someone that looks like them, whom they can relate to. Let's be clear, every student may not be able to relate with the teacher of their racial background, but the representation is a plus. Diversity is the key as well as a good teacher. The Thompsons, a local family of color that grew up here in Rantoul, learned in our schools and now work with our kids at the elementary, middle, and high school level. As a group, we were tasked with picking a deficit we see in our district in regards to racial equity. What first came to mind for all members of this group was hiring a more diverse staff that would more accurately reflect our student population. This is an issue that districts across the country are currently taking on. Increased diversity within the school staff will not only benefit students of color, but all students and staff. From the mouths of our own students, I would like to have teachers of all colors. A middle school student, I want to go to a school where I can have teachers that look like me. It is hard to feel like I can do something when I can't see someone that looks like me doing it. In some American cities, the odds that a black male student will be taught by a black male teacher are roughly one in fifty-five. According to a research study, more than half of student populations across the country are students of color. But eighty-two percent of teachers within schools are white. Can you go to the next slide, please?
Yes.
Comparatively, in our district, there are seventy-point-six percent students of color. Our teacher population is made up of only eight-point-seven percent people of color. This statistic in itself shows a major deficit in diverse hiring practices, but becomes more shocking in comparison to the state average of seventeen-point-four percent teachers of color. From the Black Lives Matter at school dot com, the elimination of black teachers is an aggressive push towards homogenizing education in America, creating the school-to-prison pipeline and honoring the pervasive system of racism from which our country gains its roots. Studies show that students excel academically when they are taught from someone in their own racial group. This message of inequity negatively impacts our students' aptitude for learning and limits the scopes of their dreams. Our black teachers need our support and deserve to no longer be abandoned. Thank you. We can go to the next slide.
Okay, so some possible solutions. Address the lack of diversity head-on by pursuing staff of color and removing the barriers and obstacles they face to become and remain a teacher in our district. Number one, recruit a staff representative of our student body. Number two, partner with RTHS universities such as historically black colleges and universities and local and national organizations. And number three, hiring incentives for RCS employees. Go on to the next slide, please. So we have some specific recommendations for the district and as Dr. Woods said, there is another, there's a Google Doc that has more information about all of these and it's really worth the read because there's a lot of great information out there. So we're proposing to diverse hiring teams for each building. Updating the website, we personally know of a school district that was refused to go to an historically HBCU job fair because their website was not diverse. So that it's important that we look at it and check for bias in our website and intentionally make sure that it's a diverse website that reflects our students. Adopt the hiring processes of districts who have shown significant gains in minority hiring. So there are districts that we can look at that have actually hired like diversity hiring and retention specialists and they've made eight percent gains in three years, districts close to us. Support local residents to obtain higher certifications, so actively pursue them, welcome them into the program, evaluate the workplace culture humility and confidence. So there is another social equity group doing this and we will be working with them to design the survey for that. Coordinate with universities that offer family tuition benefits such as the U of I, so families that earn sixty thousand or under can go there for reduced tuition or for free tuition. So coordinate with them to get some of our community members or people in our schools into those programs. Target diverse student teachers through local organizations. So working with them, letting them know what our mission statement is for the social equity group and hopefully we can get some minority student teachers to come do their student teaching at Ader. Develop, or not just Ader, but the district, develop an educator track starting at JW Ader. So working with RTHS, who is pursuing this, Mr. Mario, is wanting to develop a program where they're gonna target certain students that seem to have an aptitude for teaching and maybe they can end up getting credit at the school, but starting that at JW Ader and pushing it through. Utilize the staff of color that we currently have. So speaking with staff that currently works for RCS, there's time where they feel like they're underserved, like there's committees or there's important decisions that directly affect the students that they're not part of and they would like to be part of those decisions and part of those committees. Explicit mentoring program for staffs of color. So making sure that with the staff that we do have is reaching out to them and that they're feeling welcome here and not isolated. Because as they said, it can be intimidating for a black teacher or black administrator, I'm sure, to sit in a class or in a business meeting or in a meeting where it's all white people. Workshops for loan forgiveness, college applications, grants, and other obstacles to becoming a teacher. So this is one that could benefit all. We could have colleges come in, we could have banks come in and they could do workshops to let people know about the forgiveness programs they have. So I myself have benefited from having seventeen thousand five hundred forgiven on a student loan. But there are a lot of teachers that are not aware of these programs, so this would be something that would be great for all teachers to know about. Seek out grants to support minority recruitment and retention. So we contacted ISBE, we've talked with NEA, we've talked with IEA and they made us aware of programs and grants that are available that we can apply for to help with some of these things that we're asking be done. There's a national push, there's a local push, there's a state push. There was just a law signed in by JW, by Prickster that put into effect scholarship for black male teachers thirty-five percent. So that's something that definitely is coming down. So there is money available and now is the time to do this. Increase awareness in our district of these efforts. So speaking with people in the community, speaking with people RTHS and staff and people at RCS, communication is a problem. There are a lot of great things happening in our school district and in our community, but unfortunately, a lot of people are not aware of them. So we need to find some kind of a central communication hub, maybe working with the Chamber of Commerce to be able to disseminate information out to our staff at RCS, to our districts that are close by and to our community. Thank you very much for listening and you may go to the next slide.
We urge the board to consider the following action request. The board directs the superintendent to develop, present a plan to the board to increase minority teacher slash administrator recruitment and retention. This plan should fully consider the recommendations of the Social Equity Working Group, including implementing diverse hiring teams, collaborating with local schools and universities, grant writing, supporting new staff, and navigating financial obstacles related to university education, administering and inclusion of minority staff. This plan may consider allocating funds for a position to oversee minority teacher slash administrator recruitment and retention. Minimally, this initial plan should be presented to the board by fall of two thousand twenty-one and be in place for spring two thousand twenty-two recruitment. We now open up for any questions or comments that you may have.
Thank you all for working on this. So board members, do you have any questions for the group or for me or really, I guess, anyone else who's on this meeting right now?
Any board member have any questions?
I didn't have any questions, but I just wanted to say again, it's like a breath of fresh air to see that we're moving in this direction. We've been talking about this and asking about it for the last two years and we've always heard that it's something that, you know, we can't do, we can't find teachers of color. So it's good to see that we're moving in that direction.
Thank you. Yes, we agree.
One thing I would add, just because, you know, one of the things they talked about was communication and sharing what we're doing. The last few board meetings, we have been sharing some information with you on some pieces of this that are partly in place and as Tracy said, it's, there's been a big push at the state level to get some of this going. So we are working with Eastern Illinois University, who is partnering with Parkland College on a program for non-traditional students. We're part of the Grow Your Own Collaborative with Eastern Illinois University, which focuses on staffing in rural schools. We are considered one of those. And the EFE, Tracy referenced this, which is the Education for Employment Office, which is based at Parkland, is also working with Rantoul High School and we're working with them. Hopefully, all of the feeder districts in Rantoul High School are gonna work together on that track for youngsters to go into teaching and we want to start that in, at the junior high level so that they're feeding into RTHS and hopefully become teachers. There's also an MOU tonight on the agenda that is another type of approach. It would potentially bring in folks who aren't certified in, in special education into special ed, which is a huge need for us to staff those positions. So yeah, I just wanted to make sure we know that some of this is going on, but really what this group wants us to do is put it all in one place in one plan in that we're all working towards the same goal and that is to diversify our staff.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Bill, I'd just like to reiterate what Joe says. Thank you. You know, this is a big first step and if there's anything I can do as a board member, please don't hesitate to reach out and I would gladly help.
Okay.
I also would like to say, I especially like the idea of bringing our children from this community through the teaching system and then they come back home and teach here. That would be a marvelous thing to see happen.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you mentioned the Thompsons because those are the two kids I'm very proud of. They went through our system here at the Recreation Department and I've known those kids since they were real little and I'm gonna be happier with them and and now that they're playing for RCS, gonna be happier for that.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, then I want to thank you for the presentation.
Can I just say, I really do think it's worth looking through the document that's attached. There's a lot of good information in there. There's a video of a student that's in a program here in Illinois where he went to the high school and came back and he's now mentoring younger students. And it's like three minutes long, but it's really powerful.
Okay, thank you.
I will make sure that you have that link.
Okay. All right then, board members, if there aren't any more questions or comments, then would, if someone's ready or we're ready, then someone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Bill.
Okay, so is that Mr. Graham, correct? Mr. Graham's gonna make the motion to direct the superintendent to develop and present a plan to the RCS board to increase minority teacher slash administrator recruitment and retention by fall of two thousand twenty-one. Anyone care to second that?
I second it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Robinson and then we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Robinson.
Hi.
Ulot.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Keys. Sorry. Graham.
Hi.
Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Sweat.
Hi. Okay, and that looks like it's unanimous that motion carries, so therefore we'll direct the superintendent to come up with a plan. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, presenters. Nikia, can you move them back over to the attendee side? Thanks, guys.
Yeah, sure will.
Thank you.
Hey.
Thank you.
This moves us on to item number seven. This is a reopening school updates. Our superintendent, Michelle Ramage, you're up.
All right. I will be honest, three days ago, I thought, we don't really have a whole lot to present this time because we've been doing this every month and I thought, well, it still have anything new. Well, just hold on a second. On Tuesday, we had a part four of the ISBE IDPH guidance, so I will share a little bit of that with you. I mentioned this part, the Rockefeller Foundation Saliva PCR Test Pilot Program. I just briefly mentioned that last month. We were just beginning discussions, so I can bring you up to date to where we are now. It's very exciting news. So in addition to our rapid antigen test that we do, this saliva PCR test will be at Ader only, at the junior high only. We are one of four districts, four schools actually, in the state, working with the U of I and the Rockefeller Foundation. So it is a champagne, Urbana, a school in Chicago and us. So that's pretty pretty great, pretty awesome that we're included in that. There is no cost for us for the pilot program. Just to give you an idea, I asked for, you know, what do, what do these tests cost? They said, oh, it costs about twenty dollars per test. So if we were going to do weekly surveillance of all of our students and staff, that would cost us about forty thousand dollars a week. Obviously, we could not afford that. Why are we doing this in addition to the antigen testing that we already have? Obviously, there are two different types of tests, but the CDC recommendation is that we have layers of mitigation efforts and different kinds of testing is part of that and so it makes our schools safer. So that's why we're looking into this. Twice, we are looking into twice a week surveillance of our students who are in sports or extracurriculars and that would be required. You want to participate in these activities, then we need you to participate in a twice a week surveillance testing. Everybody else who would, would have to give consent and that would be weekly. We have kind of done a, Dr. Woods has done an informal survey with the staff, how many people would be interested in this and we've been very pleased with the result. Honestly, we will be counting on our staff, not only to make it safer for our students to do the testing if they so choose, but it's also and I know middle school is a little hard sometimes with this idea, but we'd like maybe our staff to be role models in that situation. It lends to discussions about why the testing is important and talk about, you know, ways to keep yourself safe and so we're hoping that just becomes a natural part. And here's the oddest part of the whole thing. It is only for this school year. So I know that we're about nine weeks away. It's only for this school year. It's not for next year. So why are we doing this? Because by the time this gets off the ground, it could be that at the earliest would probably be the middle of April. Well, you just never know. What, what if Rockefeller Foundation comes back and says, hey, we've got more money and let's do this in the fall? And if we'd said no now, then we wouldn't have the opportunity in the fall. So they are, but they just came in that with us today in person to look at our site and talk about logistics. Any questions on that section?
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I just say, the saliva test really intrigues me. I found, I was talking with a member of the U of I athletic staff and he said that they have caught all their positives on the saliva test three days before the, the quick up-the-nose test. So saliva testers doing positive three days before everything else. So, so this is pretty good.
This is what it looks like. I don't know if you can tell that, but it's a little funnel and there's a line and you have to, you know, obviously your saliva goes in there up until the line. Very interesting, very interesting for sure, so.
I wanna be, I just think it's gonna be fun, middle school principal, to teach all these kids have a spit.
Let me tell you, I was, I was one of them that when they first started trying this back in May or June, right before I had my cataract surgery, I was one of the first ones in line when they started trying this. So you sign the thing saying, yes, you participate in it. It takes a while to fill that tube up with saliva, but I was, I said, sure, I'm, I'm happy to do it, you know, it was and then it wasn't, it was like six or eight weeks later that they started ramping it out more. So if you went through the line at Carl, you know, when they first started talking about it, I was one of the first ones that got to spit in the container. So it's harder than you think.
Yeah, it's a, they said an average of like, what, five to seven minutes, Scott?
Yeah, it takes a while to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not real quick.
No, but Scott's gonna, you know, he's gonna do a demonstration on video. I'm right? Publicly now, he's gotta say it. So he's gotta do it. Any other questions on the saliva test?
No other questions, then we can go on to the next one then, Michelle.
Yes, I'm ready for the next one. All right, just a very brief update on our positive cases at RCS for the past thirty-five school days. So this is since January nineteenth. You can see the breakdown on there. There are thirty-four students in thirty-five days. So these are only those students who participate in person. So of course, that number is larger in the community, but these are only those that participate in person. And there were several at the very start from when we returned, January nineteenth, who had never been in school because we were closed. So we didn't report that information out to the public. So if you're thinking in your mind, well, I haven't heard anything a whole lot lately, or doesn't seem to be as many. There were a large number of them that were right at that beginning in January nineteenth that we didn't report out because there were, the kids weren't in school. So we've had five staff test positive, one of them is a student teacher and one of those five is a practicum student. So that's a total of thirty-nine cases. And also, I thought this was interesting. I track how many days that staff are not on campus due to COVID reasons. We've had a hundred and fifty-two days that a staff member hasn't been present. Fifty-seven of those staff were not able to work remotely. Either their position doesn't allow for that or they were too ill or they were caring for family. So that's just good for you to know that, yes, we had a hundred and fifty-two days of people not on campus, but only fifty-seven of them were days that people could not work from home. Next slide. So this is that, what I mentioned before, the ISBE IDPH Revised Public Health Guidance for Schools, Part Four, that just came out on Tuesday. This particular type of guidance, the part one, two, three, and four, we have received no update since the last nine months. So it's been nine months since we've seen an update. That was part three. So some of these things we've already heard before, in-person learning is prioritized over extracurricular activities and events. I think I reported on that last time. This one is big news. This one is new. We're still listening to webinars to get, I guess, interpretation of what this is. So just kind of stay tuned for that. Again, we just received this information. But social distancing is now three to six feet for students and fully vaccinated staff. So six feet still remains the safest distance, but we can operate at no less than three feet. Unvaccinated staff have to remain six feet social distancing because adults remain more susceptible to the infection than children. And of course, regardless, everybody still has to wear a mask. And close contacts and quarantine, you still follow six feet, 15 minutes, and 24 hours if you're not vaccinated. So just because it says, hey, you can go less than six feet, remember, we still have to follow the six feet if there are close contacts. So it would, if we go below six feet, we have to all understand that that means when there's a close contact, it's going to wipe out groups of people a lot faster. Capacity limits were, they're determined now by the space's ability to social distance. So there's no set capacity limit. The bus capacity does have a limit of 50. And then the most difficult and challenging piece of all is when students are eating and they have their masks off, we must remain six feet, breakfast and lunch. We've been doing a lot of talking about that. It's not the first time that we've been talking about it. We've been doing a lot of talking about it, and that's a huge hurdle to overcome. And then here's another piece of something we need to learn more about. But the information in the document says schools are only required to offer remote learning for households with higher medical risks. We're still working on what is the interpretation of that? What will that mean for our district? Next page, please. Next slide. Oh, yeah. All right, last slide. We have provided many opportunities for students to return in person. We've talked about that repeatedly. The overall numbers really have not increased as you were aware at last month. We are still, we are still at about 60% in person. We do have four students right now who did end up on a waiting list, and we are working only with those to see if we can add them into the classroom now that we can go less than six feet. That has to be agreed by the teacher and all the parents involved because the board approved plan is for six feet. So we'll have phone calls made to each of those parents involved in those classrooms. And again, those are only for the four students that we have on the waiting list for the whole district. Right now, we are not recommending a change in our current plan for the last nine weeks for multiple reasons. And a couple of those I did document there. If it would take about two to three weeks to change, to work on the busing changes that would happen, our bus routes are completely different this year than any other year, and they were designed to have very few students on the bus. Schedules and Skyward would need to change, and that's connected to attendance and grades. And then we're right in the middle of, we're right at the beginning of testing when we return from spring break for our state assessments. And making that schedule as we already have currently in place with the students that we already have in place with the schedules that they already have to change all of that would be devastating, I think. So the next topic is summer school. It has been a challenge, but we will continue to promote and communicate about summer school. Teacher recruitment is a struggle. Just, it's not any different at RCS than any other district. We have heard from other districts that they too are finding some challenges in recruiting teachers. That's understandable. They're tired. They're very tired. Another concern is we had one school send out their letters about summer school early. So this school in our district sent out 63 letters to first and second grade parents that were recommending summer school for, and the deadline was a couple of days ago. And out of those 63, six. We heard from six. Doesn't mean that we quit, give up. We'll still pound the pavement and do our best to make sure that parents understand what we're offering. But the rest of the schools sent out their letters this week, so we'll get better numbers right after break. Then, so the last one is the fall. And in the fall, we will continue to work with both the associations, teachers, administrators, to make plans for the fall. It is probably likely, pretty likely, that we will have full days. Since we do have the three feet, again, that's very premature for me to say all that out loud. We still have to get some interpretation of that three feet. And like I said, the biggest hurdle is the lunch. But we will definitely be working on space staffing, scheduling, and we've already been working on that. We will continue to work on that. We'll get feedback. We eventually, obviously, will get feedback from parents when we know a little bit more about what we're talking about. Any questions? The only board approval that I have tonight and related to this whole topic is saliva PCR testing. Just would like support on that to continue down that road. It's at no cost. But I'm here to talk about any other items that were on the presentation.
I had a question. Vaccinations for staff, do you have any idea what the numbers look like for your staff members that are getting vaccinated?
The last, that's a good question.
But just some ideas of what's happening there.
The last time that we, I did an informal survey, my estimate was about 75%. We are now switching to collecting that information in Skyward. So we, when they, when a, and actually, I'm sending a reminder tonight, tomorrow. When they get into, when a staff member gets into Skyward, there's a little questionnaire. When did you, are you vaccinated? When were your vaccines? Do you plan to get vaccinated, or do you not plan to get vaccinated? So I will have a better idea after we collect those. We still had some staff that went today, believe today, to get their vaccines. So I didn't want to collect too early the information. But I think that our staff, we have a bigger percentage of our staff than we, than maybe what's typical. But I don't have exact numbers yet. We are collecting that.
Right, anybody else have any other questions or comments?
We do have staff that cannot get vaccinated as well, so we, for medical reasons. And so we have to, we have to, that has to be part of that conversation, too. You know, surely, yes, we all understand there are people who just don't want to get vaccinated, but there are people who are medically not able to be vaccinated as well. So that all has to be part of our conversation.
Anybody else have any other questions, comments, concerns? Then if not, Michelle, thank you for the presentation. And then take a look, if the board doesn't have any questions or comments or concerns, then if someone cares, someone ready to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the, I know I'm on the wrong thing. A motion to approve the saliva PCR testing at Ader as soon as legal documents are obtained and provide an update to the board in April.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Ms. Fitzgerald, seconded by Ms. Ulot, and we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Graham? Swat?
Aye. Okay, it looks like it's unanimous that motions carry, so we can participate in the PCRT testing program. Okay, this moves us on to item number eight. It's an action item, and it's the First Student Transportation Contract Extension. The contract extension that we're presenting this evening is for a 3% for one year, which is a legal increase that we can extend.
It's the legal amount of time, so we can only do one year at a time right now. So, and what we're present, what they presented to us was 3%. So we can only do one year at a time, extensions now.
So any board member have any questions, concerns regarding this contract extension? If not, then would someone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the First Student Transportation Contract Extension for the 2021-2022 school year.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Ulot. Anyone care to second? Joan raised her hand.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Fitzgerald, and then we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
What?
Aye. Okay, it looks like it's unanimous that motion carries, and contracts, the extension has been approved. Moves us on to item number nine. It's an action item. It's the RCSEA slash RCS Memorandum of Understanding. It's a job sharing and pathways to special education teacher. Ms. Ramage, presentation?
Yes, so this is the year for MOUs. I think this is a record number of MOUs that we've done. So a lot of working together with our associations, which has been great. The first one is job sharing. This fall, we hope to have two people that would be interested in job sharing. So we have a MOU to address, it's a very unique situation and a lot of things to think about. So we have that MOU for you. The second one, Dr. Woods already referred to a little bit, is called Pathways to Special Education Teacher. So as you know, we have always had a shortage that's throughout the state, a shortage of special education teachers. Next year, we already know that we're going to be about four or five teachers short. Two of those were positions that we just, we never did fill with full-time teachers, full-time staff. So the special education teacher pathway will allow a current licensed teacher to take coursework through National Lewis University, which is five classes, depending on each person's transcript, with the district covering that cost. So, and the plan requires that the teacher take one course by August, and there are, there is availability, and they would be able to do that. We're working with them, for them to take that by August so that they can obtain their emergency license for special education. That emergency license lasts for three years, and that's the three years that they can use to take the rest of the coursework. During that time, they will have their emergency license for special education. They can be and fill a special education teacher position. And then we have in the agreement how we would like them to, how long we would like them to stay after they obtain their, it's called LBS1. So part of that agreement is that they would remain here for a total of at least five years. If they leave the district, obviously, they would have to reimburse us for the tuition. We are also going to have the same discussion with our other association, RCESPA, because, in fact, I know we have at least one teaching assistant who has a teaching license. And if that person's interested, we would need to have an MOU for that association as well. So we anticipate bringing that to you in April. We, the teachers, anybody who's interested in this, there is a meeting via Zoom on March 22nd with National Lewis University. So we're already moving pretty quickly because they need to get registered, and the first class could start April 5th. They could choose, I think, April 5th and maybe July to take that one class that we need in order for them to obtain their emergency license. Questions?
If I have any questions? Michelle, I was going to ask, if this gets approved this evening, then do you think you might be able to include this in when we're recruiting for teachers as a possible incentive?
Yes, we already, we're already been talking about it a little bit, say pending board approval. So now we don't have to say pending board approval, definitely. It's a great, yeah, great minds, yep.
Anybody else have any questions or comments, concerns? If not, then would someone care to make the motion? Looks like Joan's getting ready to. You're still, you're still on mute. There you go.
I'm just making sure I'm off mute. Let's see, I would like to make the motion to, where is it?
Item number two. Motion to, Joan would like to make a motion to approve new RCSEA slash RCS Memorandum of Understanding. First one.
Job sharing and special education. There you go.
Okay, and motion was made by Ms. Fitzgerald. Anyone care to second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Brotherton, and we'll need a roll call, please.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And it looks like it's unanimous that motions carry, so those MOUs have been approved. Okay, this moves us on to item number 10. It's an action item. It's for facilities. And we have Shannon Clark, our facilities director. You ready?
I'm ready. Good evening. I'm Shannon Clark, the facilities director for RCS, and I'm excited to present some of the things that we've done this over the pandemic. I would like to briefly give you an update on the facilities, what we've been doing since the shutdown November 16th, 2020, and highlight a few of the items that we are currently working on for the summer of 2021. Before I give this update, I would like to take a moment to thank my staff for their willingness to work hard during this time. I discovered a lot of things about my staff over these few months. We have floor care specialists. We have cleaners, carpenters, painters, and much, much more in this district. We have a very special group of young men and women who are working very hard to keep the facilities clean and safe for staff. I do have a presentation there on the screen that Scott is sharing with you, I believe, of some of the items that we did take care of over the time period that a lot of people were at home or working remote. As you can see from the documentation in your board packet, we painted 36 classrooms in the district. This was between Northview, Pleasant Acres, and Ader Junior High. We stripped and stained eight doors at Pleasant Acres, upgraded classroom doors with handicap accessible door handles at Pleasant Acres, and we rectified our regional office, regional office and fire marshal violations. We also installed a new awning above the boardroom entrance to better identify this for the public. Over spring break, our architect will be investigating roofs and gutters for our five-year plan. For a roof inspection completed on November 10th, 2020, it indicated that our roofs were in fair condition. We are wanting to be proactive and not reactive when it comes to these types of repairs or items. This summer, some of the things that we have planned already to do at Pleasant Acres pre-K, the playground is going to get an upgrade. In order to meet the pre-K program code requirements, we will be adding handicap accessible equipment, shade, and a poured surface for rideable equipment. We will also be working with Team Reel, who is a pre-approved vendor for the state of Illinois. We are currently working with our architect also to modernize the entrances at East Lawn and Pleasant Acres that have become quite worn and unsightly. In addition to the visual and safety improvements, this will also serve as protection to our children against the weather conditions during the spring rains and our winter storms. We will be using Esser grant money as part of this investment. At Ader Junior High, we plan to replace two banks of lockers that we can no longer get parts for. And then that will be in the main hall. And then in the entire sixth grade wing, we are adding all new lockers there and an additional 20, just in case we need them. At Broad Meadow, Pleasant Acres, and Ader Junior High, we are working with an outside contractor to get pricing to redo the parking lots. At this time- At this time, I do not have a cost estimate, but we're working with the company. With the additional, with the addition of the upcoming Esser grants from the federal government that are specifically targeting facilities, we do expect that we are going to be extremely busy in the upcoming months. So, I am sure I'll be back to give more updates. I want to thank you for well, having me this evening, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, before I ask the board members if they have any questions or comments, and I would like to know if you can let the minutes reflect that Mr. Keys has joined us, and Mark sent you, if you can hear me, if you would not mind just stating that you're present and how you're attending the meeting, please, for the record.
Mark Keys, attending remotely.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes.
Any board members have any questions, comments?
I, I do, Bill, Shannon, thank you so much. You really work hard at your job, and really appreciate how much you, you thank our employees that, and I know they do a good job, but it's just nice that you recognize them, thank you.
I have to say, without, without them, there is no me, so I, I, I respect that, they work very hard for this district.
And I, I second John's comments. You know, you care about the district and you care about your, your workers, and you recognize them, and that's just a real positive work atmosphere, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I just tell you, Shannon, you know, working with Team Reel in the past, and right now, they've, they've, they've done a really, really good job, so I don't know if you've ever had them, but they're, they're really good, they're doing a splash pad and playground right now for us.
We actually did a community build with them when I first got here at pre-K. So, they were really easy to work with, real positive. We, we've had a great interaction with them, so I'm pleased that they're the, they're the group we're working with again.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? If not, I just have one question, I think I need to direct this to both Shannon and Ms. Ram. My question is, is do we have any plans in the future to maybe look at the ventilation systems in all the buildings to see if they can possibly be improved, so in the event of another pandemic? Will be ready?
Jen, you can pop in if you want to as well, obviously, a big topic of, and lots of time and, and research, Jen, into our, our current system, you know, as, as probably maybe the public doesn't know, we had geothermal put in about 10 years ago, so a little bit more than that. So, I, I could tell you that the staff has been used to until this year, do not open your windows, don't, don't open your doors, that it's very controlled, right? We have, we have been doing the exact opposite of that during all of this. So, Jen, do you want to add anything about all the things that we've researched?
Right, so currently, we've utilized the, the fans, and, and we're using, Shannon has already put in the highest level of MERV rated filters that we can use for our system. You know, really, what, what you're talking about would be pretty much changing to medical-grade type ventilation systems, which really is just not fiscally realistic for our district long-term. But there are definitely things that we can put in place that will improve that air quality, and those are things that we continue to do. Obviously, we, we made sure that we had the, the air filters, the windows open, the fans going. Shannon and I are attending some sessions about the R0 that you've probably seen on the news, that, that Leroy and some other school districts are looking at, that completely sanitized. They also have various fan systems that have the same capability that remove COVID like 90% in classrooms and as well as the flu. So, we want to look long-term, we know COVID's going to be long-term, just like the flu is, and it's been really very nice because we have not seen much of the flu that we typically see throughout the winter. And so, if we can continue practices that make sure that our students are able to be at school and reduce the amount of time that staff and students are sick, then that's a worthwhile investment with the Esser funds that are coming in. So, there's a lot of things on the market right now, as you can imagine. And so, we, Shannon and I are definitely investigating and researching all of those different things to ensure that we can be both fiscally responsible, but also look at long-term air quality for our schools.
Okay.
And I, and I will comment as well, right when this hit, we went around and made sure all of our exhaust fans were working properly, just to make sure, because we have to have those working at all times. Same with our outside air that we're bringing in, that's why we also added the fans. We're bringing in about 5 to 10% outside air as well to try to recirculate with the fans going back out, so we're, we're trying to do what we can to keep everyone safe.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Comments? Concerns? If not, then Shannon, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks for having me.
And this is an action item, so if there aren't any further comments, then would someone care to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve bidding for East Lawn and Pleasant Acres awnings, and to move forward with the pre-K playground improvements as presented.
Okay, the motion was made by Ms. Ullot, anyone care to second? I'll go on in a second, make it real simple. So, you lot made the motions, what's seconded, so we're ready for a roll call vote.
Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Ullot.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Robinson.
We didn't hear you, Joe.
Hi.
There you go.
Keys.
Hi.
Graham.
Hi.
What?
Hi. Okay, it looks like that's unanimous, the motion carries, so you can go on and start doing the bidding. Next item is item 11, it's an action item, it's preparation, it's preparation of the tentative 2020-21-2022 budget. And it's, it's one of our required duties as, as the board, is we must designate a person or persons to prepare a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022. So, the person that we're recommending, or has been suggested, is the superintendent, so would someone care to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to designate the superintendent to prepare the 2021-2022 tentative budget, please.
Okay, motion was made by Joan Fitzgerald, anyone care to second?
I'll second it.
I think, was that Mark, was he giving me this second? Okay, seconded by Ms. Ullot, and then we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Graham.
Hi.
Ullot.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Keys.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
What?
Hi. Okay, it looks like that's unanimous, motion carries, so superintendent will be tasked with preparing the budget for the next school year. This moves us onto item number 12. It's an action item, it's a personnel report, has everybody had an opportunity to review the personnel report? There's any questions, comments, or concerns that can be discussed in an open session? No questions, no comments, no concerns? All right, then would someone care to make that a motion?
I'll make the motion for personnel report.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Brotherton to approve the personnel report, as including with the stipulation that each individual is required to comply with all requirements for new hires as indicated in Illinois statutes and RCS board policy and procedures. So, that was made by Mr. Brotherton, and we're here to second.
I seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, and we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Ullot.
Hi.
Keys.
Hi.
Fitzgerald.
Hi.
Graham.
Hi.
Robinson.
Hi.
Brotherton.
Hi.
What?
Hi. Okay, it looks like that's unanimous also, and personnel report has been approved. This moves us onto item number 13, it's an informational item. Items this category are, the first is the FOIAs, we've had two FOIAs, one was from Edgar Watchdog Group. The attorney fees cost us $1,135, employee cost was $121.74, for a total of $1,0256.74. Second one was for public contractors, the total cost was $31.99, and this was strictly employee costs only. And then the second item for information is a board meeting for April 15th, and we have a special board meeting scheduled for the 27th. Okay. Next brings us item number 14, is board superintendent comments. At this time, superintendent, do you have any comments this time?
No, I do not.
Okay, so we'll go around the board, board members, anybody have anything to bring before the rest of the board today?
I do.
Okay, Ms. Ullot?
This might go along with what we're trying to accomplish with the social equity working group. It's been brought to my attention that a current board member who's not up for reelection tried to discourage a community member who is a African-American to not run for the board. And as someone who supports the social equity working group, and I have often said that I, I believe, and I, I've, I've said it before, I want more diversity on our board, that it upsets me and disgusts me that anyone on our current Board of Education has the audacity to try to discourage anyone in this community from running for the Board of Education when we are particularly trying to make our schools, our administrators, our staff, and our board more culturally diverse. And I think that we all need to stop and think about what our duties as board members are and what we are supposed to do as far as representing our community and our students. And I just wanted to say that I am very disappointed that this happened, and I do not condone that kind of behavior, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ullot. Ms. Fitzgerald.
I also heard this story from a different source that this person was, this board member was also so very rude in how it was stated, that this person should not run for the board, this person was not going to be acceptable to the board. And it just took my breath away, that anybody would say that to another human being, never mind a respected African-American who has children in the district, who cares about the district enough to want to get in and help. You know, number one job of a school board member is to hire a superintendent and support that superintendent in the job they do, and help them do a good job. The second one is to encourage other people to serve on the board, to serve on committees, to help the board. And that's, that's not going to happen with this kind of behavior going on. No, yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree with Sandra, disgusted is the best word.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concern? At this time, to bring, present the rest of the group before the rest of the board? If not, then we'll move on to item number 15, it's an action item, it's closed session. Recommend going to closed session for personnel, more specifically, it's the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors, or specific volunteers for the district, or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor, or a volunteer of the district, or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. That's a specific exception that we'll be going into closed session for. Would someone care to make the motion?
I, I had a question regarding this closed session.
Yeah.
Wanted to a separate Zoom meeting, but how do we ensure that, you know, the meeting is secure? That, you know, we have households, we have people in our houses, you know, that can hear, overhear the meeting? It's not exactly a closed session meeting.
Well, it will be a closed session meeting because we're going to be all in one little room, and there's nobody else, because you guys are at home, and I'm here at the, at the office, and there's nobody else around me that can hear it.
I think Joe is concerned about other people in your homes so that you would have to make sure that you are in a secure location to do that.
Well, possibly if each person said, I'm in a location where there are no other people, I can close this door and I'm alone. Is that, would that be what you're looking for, Joe?
One of the easiest ways is to put in headphones, they, they, they can only hear what you say, I get they could just, yeah, those are my ideas.
I, I only have a dog and cat with me.
Right, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, I just, if that's what you guys want to do, go on a closed session, then, you know, we're going to do it and, and, you know, take care of it, but, you know, just, you know, on the record that I just don't think it's very.
Okay, well, then if, when we go to a vote to go into a closed session, then you can either vote, yeah, you agree, or nay, you disagree, that's all.
All right.
Nikki, do you have any other ideas? I saw you pop in.
No, I was going to say, I guess only the headphones is the only thing you can do right now, but I'm not sure everyone has headphones.
Michelle?
Yes.
Maybe an idea is like we've had to do with some of our employee meetings, is that when you are being recorded in closed session, is that each person states that it's on the record for that recording that they are alone, and that there is no one able to hear? That's what we've done with some of our employee meetings.
Yeah, we've, we've had to conduct confidential meetings, obviously, you know, in our jobs and from home. So, it, it is, and, and obviously, other boards are remote, and they too are conducting closed session. It's a good question, and, and.
I, I think we just have to trust that each one of us has asked our spouse or children or whatever to relocate themselves to a different place, or that we relocate ourselves, and, and just trust that we're all taken care of that. And, I mean, I have a dog and a cat, so I'm as safe as I can be, they don't care.
I think it's a very valid.
It is.
I, I really do. And also, just so that everybody knows, the Zoom will be, the closed session will be recorded, but it will be recorded the same way that we've recorded them before, which is just audio. So, there will not be a Zoom recording of our closed session. It will be done, which is the way we've always done it, with an audio recorder, of which Bill Sweat takes that with him as he goes, it doesn't even stay here in the building. And that's how we've always done the practice, is that that closed session tape does not stay here. So, we don't have access to it, just the board. It's okay.
Anybody else have any concerns regarding this motion?
Oh, but I thank Joe for bringing it up, it, it raises, you know, a thought that I hadn't thought about before, that someone standing outside could listen to it.
True. Some of the difficulties of having meetings remote.
Yeah.
So, if we don't have any other questions or comments, and would someone? I guess it's time for the vote, because motions aren't even read. Anna, you ready to call, do a roll call?
Did we have somebody make the motion? I'm sorry.
It was read, but I don't think anybody made it yet.
I thought I did.
Oh, okay.
Did I not say still moved? Did I not say so moved?
Do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Mr. Keys.
All right, I apologize if I missed that. I, I heard the reading, but not the, the so moved. Robinson?
Nay.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Yulat?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
Fitzgarrow?
Aye.
Graham?
Andy, you're up.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
What?
Aye.
Okay.
I want just to make sure that the public knows that this meeting will stay, uh, running. Nobody here, I mean, there'll be people here, but the board will be in a different Zoom, and then we, the board will come back into this meeting after, to, to come back into open session, so.
So the record will reflect that we have six in favor and, uh, one opposed. So, um, at this time, we'll be, uh, making our, uh, appropriate moves to, uh, get into the flight to, uh, attend the closed session. And I have what, uh, seven forty-one? Seven forty-two?
I have seven forty-two.
Seven forty-two? We'll move on over to the closed session side.
Do we have to do something, Bill?
Yes, you have to, uh, you're gonna have to exit out of this meeting, and then open up Michelle's, uh, email with the invitation, and then click on the link for closed session.
Okay. All right, see you in a little bit.
Um, Nick, we are still on, uh, CO staff, uh, and we still have fourteen attendees, so I'm just gonna clarify for the attendees that uh, we do not know how long the board will be in closed session, um, but just like if we were in person, the boardroom is open, which is essentially this Zoom room. Um, and the, this meeting will reconvene with the board whenever they return. It could be five minutes, it could be five hours. Um, so I know, oh, we lost an attendee. Amazing. Um, so, uh, but they will have to reconvene into this meeting in order to adjourn the, the meeting. Um, I would think that, uh, Jennifer and Allison, I don't know that you guys need to stay on for anything. That question came up. Hello?
Muted, Jenny.
You're muted, Jenny.
I'll probably just hang out.
Okay, well, we probably shouldn't just hang out and talk, because we still have twelve attendees. Myself and, uh, help my wife, uh, wrangle my children, so.
God, you guys can't leave me, so.
I'm gonna be here, but I'm just not gonna be sitting here on my camera.
Right. We'll wait till you hear something back.
Nine to eleven attendees. All right.
Bye, Nikia.
Bye, Nikia.
Do we have everybody back?
Not, missing a few people.
Joan said she might be leaving. She looked like she was hurt.
Yes, she looked like she was starting to hurt, yes. Okay. So would someone care to make a motion to come out of closed session?
I'll say move.
Okay. Who said that? I didn't see the face.
Mark.
All right, Mr. Keys made the motion to come out of closed session.
I'll second.
And Mr. Graham, is that Mr. Graham or Mr.?
That's Mr. Graham.
Keys. Okay, Mr. Graham seconded. If Hannah's there, could you do a roll call vote, please?
I am here.
Okay.
Keys?
Aye.
Bitts-Garrow?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Sweat?
Aye. And what, we have, what, eight oh three? Is that what you have, Hannah?
That's what I have, yes.
Okay, so we went back into open session at eight oh three. Now, let me see here, let me make sure I know how to turn this thing off. Red button should stop. No. Hopefully. Hold on, maybe his power's on here. Oh, here it is. No, that's noise cut. All righty. This moves us to item number?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And since really, the board has not, that we don't have any action to take care of, my question to the rest of the board members is, we don't really need to do a motion and approve anything right now, correct?
I mean, unless you just want to let people know, we'll have one in April.
Right.
There's nothing really to vote on.
There's nothing really to vote on.
Right.
Okay. So since there's nothing to vote on, then we move on to number eighteen, which is action item to adjourn this meeting, so.
Bill, real quick, real quick, should we just table that till April? Or does it matter? It's no consequence either way. Should we table number seventeen?
Well, actually, we don't even actually, actually have to table it, because, because there's really no action to take until April anyway. So if we do number eighteen, I'm gonna make the motion to adjourn the meeting at eight oh five PM, so we can rush it for Joan's sake.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Graham, we need a roll call vote.
Bitts-Garrow?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Rutherford?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Keys?
Aye.
You lot?
Aye.
What?
Aye. And that's unanimous, motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned. I'd like to thank everybody who attended, especially those in the public who saw us on our website. So everybody have a good evening, be safe.
Good night, everyone. Be safe.
Aye.